Call the order, regular common council meeting, Monday, July 16th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
McIntyre?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson? Walnuts?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes. Stay standing, we're gonna do the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, July 13th. The agendas were posted at the conference office library in City Hall.
Council acceptance of agenda.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Would anybody be against moving the number eight up to after personally, after the minutes?
I'll make a motion to do so.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? That's your item. Okay, the motion is to move that up. You need two most votes then, one for that and then one to accept it as amended. Motion is to move the number eight up to...
Number three.
Make it number seven?
Between six and seven? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now, all those in favor of council acceptance of the agenda as amended?
Make a motion to accept, agenda is amended. Second.
Do you have a motion?
I already have a motion.
Has anyone got a motion?
I already did it. Would that change, though? That was a separate motion for that change, wasn't it?
That was to amend the acceptance, so you've done the amendment, now you're accepting it. I don't, I didn't say a void.
Accept, except, motion, or the motion on the floor is to accept amended as, the agenda as amended now.
Right.
Second. Who made that motion?
It earlier.
Perfect.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Should've left it alone, we'd been through it by now. Okay, personal appearances, anybody that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on from that one. Next one is the minutes.
I'm making motion to approve, approval of the minutes from July 12th, 2018 council meeting?
July 2.
Oh, July 2.
Second.
Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next item is the joint council and RDA meeting minutes from July 6th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the joint council and RDA meeting from July 2nd, 2018.
I'll second.
Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, now down to number eight. Consider Tobacco Heritage Days' request to not have the city concession stand at Racetrack Park open during their event. Would you like to give us a presentation on that?
Sure, I'm Jonathan Meyer, I'm on the Tobacco Days committee, and last year we kind of threw this idea out there, we had a hard time keeping our food vendors or getting them to come back year after year because they don't make enough money between the food vendors that we have and the concession stand. I mean, concession stand being right in the middle of all the ball, ball diamonds is very convenient for customers and they choose to use that rather than the other part of the park where most of our vendors are. And so we've had many that won't come back because of that. And so we started this talk a little bit last year, and Ann had already ordered food and things like that, so we said that we would wait until this year. And so we kind of, I think, Roman had told me to have it put on the agenda, Tom asked me to talk to Ann first, and then Ann talked to somebody at City Hall, and somebody at City Hall was supposed to call me, and it just, we ended up kind of back on the same date as we were last year with the whole thing, so. And we're not asking for it to be completely closed, but it would be kind of come some kind of agreement on shared hours or also some, another example is with our vendors, we make sure that if we have a vendor that's selling hamburgers, another vendor, even if one of their products says hamburgers, they're, they're not, we agree that they're not gonna sell that product if somebody else already is. So another thing would, another option would be to come up with some kind of agreement on what would be sold.
I have a couple of questions, is now a good time, or should I wait?
No, go ahead.
So, that kind of makes sense, Jen. I guess what I would want to know is what Ann is selling at the concession stand, what are the things that she's selling at the concession stand that may or may not interfere with some of your vendors? So, if we could get an idea of what some of that is, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so Jen provided me a list of things that her vendors are gonna be selling, and so then I compared it to what I also am offering, and so we, the things I offer that aren't some of her vendors are cotton candy, popcorn, the pretzels, soda, Powerade, water, candy, grilled chicken sandwich, seeds, Mr. Freeze's, and then there, she has tacos, but I also have a walking taco, so it's a little different. And then the slush that I sell is gonna be different than the, you're having Kona Ice, right? So that's different than, that's more of like a snow cone drink versus the slush that I provide.
So what are the similar things?
Burgers, hot dogs, brats, nachos, chips.
So you have all of those in the concession stand? Okay. And those are all similar to your vendors?
Correct.
Just out of curiosity, the burgers, is that the VFW's? Okay, so they have what, burgers and?
Burgers, brats, and I think hot dogs. Some have said no hot dogs, but I think they did.
Okay, that's where, I think I'm getting confused then. So, when I talk about your stand, I'm talking about that little stand there by the, right?
In the center of all the diamonds.
Right, so you do sell hamburgers and hot dogs and through the pool?
And brats, they're all pre-cooked, so then we just have to, like, heat 'em up.
Okay, and then the VFW does too, but they're back up there, are they one of the vendors that say they don't want to come back?
No, they're not actually.
Okay, okay.
Ice is a big one, like, they haven't gone back for two years.
Who?
Kona Ice.
Okay.
With the slushies, but they also were there a year with bad weather, so.
But they're back this year.
They are coming back this year.
Which ones maybe that wouldn't be coming back? Is it truly because of the competition with Ann and her folks, or?
Not necessarily just the competition, no.
Okay.
It would be amongst all of them.
Okay.
But again, we try to make sure, like, the carnival last year, they couldn't sell certain items because our other vendors already sold those items.
Okay.
So they space it out so that each one, really truly only one vendor sells hamburger or?
Sure.
Question. Does the event have leaflet of any kind that shows where all the food vendors are, just so that there's not any contrast in awareness?
No, the food vendors are not in our brochure.
Are they there all weekend?
Thirty hours.
Everybody's there the whole weekend except the Mexican food truck, who will not be there on Sunday.
So what are, when are they open? What are the hours that they're open, like on Saturday and Sunday, the vendors?
They're, what did I tell you?
You told me 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, but you didn't tell me what days.
Well, it would be Saturday, Sunday, 10 until 9:00, and then otherwise, the Friday nights probably 5 to 9:00. We give them the hours of the park and then we get off of that. So sometimes we have people often leave.
So basically, what are you asking for, Jen, to, to the concession stand be closed or open partially, or?
We're more willing to discuss it and work something out. I guess that, we're not asking it to be closed the whole time, but just to maybe try to give up on those, more of a shake it, some kind of business.
Can I ask a Sunday question? Have we confirmed that it's only one game on Sunday, or is there a whole tournament?
Yeah, is there a men's tournament still going on on Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So what time is that?
Okay.
I don't know, yeah.
Okay.
I think it depends on where they leave off on Saturday.
Okay. Because they're usually there after 11 o'clock at night playing.
I don't think so on Sunday.
On Saturday?
Oh, yes, yes.
Saturday is really late and Sunday, or Friday is really late? Okay.
Yeah, because a lot of times they're, Marcus has to do the lights, hold the lights out because they're there after everything else.
Right.
The beer is done, and everybody else is gonna get it out.
So on Saturday, we're gonna have, well, on Friday night, we'll have four diamonds going, on Saturday we'll have four diamonds going, and on Sunday, two diamonds going, well, men's league, and then Tigers play one game at 2:00.
So, you know, when, in the past, when I'm there, now, this is just me, and this is what I do. If I'm there, and I don't do this too much, because my son's older, if he was, he was playing ball, I would be around the ball field, and I would get something at the concession stand, but then when the games were over, or if I were off doing something else, I'd get something in the, you know, where the beer is sold, or by the, um, jump houses, and in fact, no offense, Ann, but I would just always go to the VFW and get a burger. I would think your biggest, more than the concession, would be more the VFW, the competition, but, you know, I mean, I think that people are there for the ballgames, they get the convenience of it, but if you're there not watching the ballgame, there's plenty of people not watching ballgames, right? They're getting the, whether it's the, oh, what are those really yummy things with the powdered sugar, the?
Funnel cakes?
Funnel cakes, the what? Donuts. Coming from Jeep, I'm good. You know, I mean, I don't know how many people know, I didn't even know you at the concession had all that stuff in there. And frankly, I'd rather have somebody grill me a burger where I'm seeing her instead of having one pre-made.
Yeah.
But, you know, I guess I just see that it's an individual preference, that people walk around and get from whatever food cart they want, but that's just my individual opinion.
Unfortunately, or fortunately, whatever, the ball diamonds really are the big draw. I mean, we, I've been on the committee for over 10 years, I mean, we've tried, and tried, and tried to build it back up, and it's just not happening, and ball diamonds are where the majority of the people are, day and night, so.
I'm assuming that you're worried more about the fees that they pay to, they pay you to be there, right, the concession?
Honestly, I don't even know anymore. I know they used to, there used to be a vendor, a vendor fee, and I'm not, I'm not a food person, so I'm, I'm not even positive, I can't say for sure that they still have to pay a fee. I know they have to have proof of insurance and sign a contract and all this stuff, but I don't know if there's a fee still.
But you guys don't get a percentage of their take?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that's kind of was gonna lead me to my next question, because we, when I say we, I'm talking the city now, we make money off of the concession stand, is that correct?
Overall, we, it would be, yes, we spend, well, $375 I have booked for wages that'll be spent, and as I said before, that the revenues I bring in are about $2,500 average over the last five years, but then I also have to take out my food cost, so.
Okay, so that's.
I would say maybe, maybe $800, $900 would be profit.
For five years?
No, for the.
Per year?
Right.
Oh, for the weekend, oh.
For the weekend, correct.
Okay.
Because, but overall, that's, you know, when I bring in that much money, the $2,500, that's 18% of what I bring in.
Okay.
Total for the season.
Okay.
And we're always out there when there's ballgames going on, except for now the tournaments, which is another day of a discussion. And then this year, I wasn't out there when the Fourth of July was out there, because they had Little League game going and a girls' game going, that's the only time I'm not out there. Otherwise, I'm there anytime there's ballgames going.
So I guess that's where I, my head's gonna start going, is if you're about $800 or $900, you say profit for that weekend?
Profit.
Profit?
Mm-hmm.
You know, if we weren't to make that profit, we would have to think about, what do we do to make that, you know, to me, that becomes a loss then, right? I mean, so.
And the concession stand doesn't operate at a profit, if you want to call it that now, just from an operating perspective. Correct. So this weekend is pretty critical, probably because I'm guessing.
That's what I'm thinking.
Income per staffing, and this weekend is probably the best weekend you have. Oh, it is, by far. So, so that, yeah.
So if we took that away, we would have to rethink differently about a whole bunch of things.
Versus a food truck that makes nobody money, it's just there to?
They make money for themselves and variety.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't.
No, not the city.
So the way I see it, it's kind of a supply and demand thing. If, if the concession stand is selling and making money, and that's where everybody's going, and that's what they like to eat, and they're not going to this other food truck, then that other food truck, you know, why does it matter if it's there or not if it's not getting into business? I guess if there's, if there's enough food.
Exactly.
Other places serving.
Right.
You know, the way I see it, it's kind of a supply and demand thing. I mean, that's where I'm, I mean, I know it's good to have variety, but if people don't, aren't into the variety, then where are we at with it, you know? I don't know.
And I can sympathize that some of the food vendors aren't thinking about coming back, I can sympathize with you on that, I, we don't want that, but I wonder if it's truly, is that truly it, or is it truly that they're not making enough money? Are they not making enough money because of Ann's concession stand, or is it for other reasons? Because there's not enough people out there that are spending the money, or, you know, and, I mean, I've seen it, and it's very unfortunate. I hope we get, Tobacco Days continues to stay current and grow, and I, but it just seems like all in all, it's just been kind of less and less people. So I guess I'm kind of looking at it that way, too, that we don't want to hurt ourselves from a city perspective, because the attendance is down, and it's gonna hurt a vendor coming in, but, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but it.
I would say that I don't think there's a vendor out there that's making a profit of $900, as, I mean.
Well, then, I mean, that's even more reason why we should keep the concession stand, I guess is what I'm saying, is if, that helps the city keeps costs down for other things, too, you know?
And then the other question we had as a committee is, how is it that it's closed on Fourth of July? Because it's always closed on Fourth, but it's also not that ways.
And that's, it's a good question.
I don't know who you meant won't let you, but.
How long has it been that way? Is there, and there's a tournament on the third?
This was the first year that I know of that they played games out there.
On the third?
On the third.
Okay, so that's a difference.
Other than Albion Tigers always plays, that's typically the only one that's out there in years past.
But they didn't this year, did they?
I don't know.
At Racetrack?
I just know that Little League and Girls have a.
I do not believe they, in fact, I know they didn't.
Tigers? No, they were fourth.
Tigers. They weren't what?
They were in fourth that night.
Yeah, so they didn't even play this year.
Right.
But I do think, it kind of sounds to me like the whole thing needs to be revisited from a park perspective, or from what, what perspective, as far as when the concession stand is open, when they're not, you know?
Yeah, and I think this is a good point about the Fourth of July, is now for the first time there's games out there, so it wouldn't make any sense for us to be open if there were games out there, but now if they're gonna have games, we have this ongoing conversation with.
Yes, correct.
We're talking about the Parks Committee about when during tournament time are we going to close so that other people can profit, so I guess that's certainly something the Parks Committee is interested in looking at.
And I think we will need to do that in the future for next year.
Will Ann talk to you about the concession stand time, or don't you know? Game calls, okay? I didn't know.
If there weren't games, have never been games out there, then it would be a logical thing.
Right, there were never games, other than Albion Tigers.
There's been an issue, yeah.
And we're never out there when Albion Tigers is playing, except for on Tobacco Days weekend if we're there.
So you're not sure if the vendors pay you anything to be there?
Customer.
And you're pretty sure they don't pay a percentage?
I know they don't pay us a percentage.
We'd all be better off if we left the concession stand open so the city could profit from it.
And the VFW, then they benefit, the VFW, and, you know, the local vendors kind of benefit.
Us locally here would be better off than.
The people benefit, it's convenient, like you said, it's a convenience thing.
Yeah, I look at, I think about like the fair, the Rock County Fair, right? You see hundreds of vendor, food vendors, right? And they're all competing against each other, but what it is, it's the attendance, and I have a feeling it's more of the lack of attendance that's kind of hitting some of these vendors, I don't know.
But I recall at Rock County that there is a leaflet that shows every, every vendor's location on the grounds.
And I'm sure it does, you know, but people, I mean, they're known to, you go to the fair and it's, hey, fair food. I mean, really, you know, and hopefully it can be like that here, too, and that we can, I mean, I love when I go to the park, I love to be thinking about fair food, you know, so.
Debbie, what if you know us all years, you used to bring the kids out there?
Well, first of all, I'm wondering what happened to the girls' tournament that weekend? My daughters were always in that, is it not?
It is, there is one, it's, uh, it's on Saturday from 1:00 to 6:00.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm just wondering if there's maybe some kind of a compromise, and how much of that $800 or $900 in profit would you actually lose if you gave up, say, a couple of the key items that the food trucks or the vendors have? And still keep the concession stand open?
Yeah, and I don't have those numbers on what each, how much of each item, you know.
I mean, is there a couple, is there like, can you come up with two or three key items that you could reach an agreement on?
The ones that are most labor intense.
Yeah.
Or really watch that, maybe this here, Ann, to say, you know, X many hamburgers or hot dogs or cotton candy or whatever the case may be that you have sold. I'll tell you what, and again, again, and no offense to you, Ann, I'd get a hot dog from that stand, but I would never think of, oh, even getting cotton candy, if I see a vendor with a cotton candy thing, I'll go to that vendor, just because.
Right, and mine's prepackaged, so it's not, it's not fresh.
Yeah, and yours is prepackaged.
Right.
You know, so.
They have good nachos.
I think a lot of it is convenience, too, with, I mean, if your parents sit in there watching one kid play a game and you got another kid, as food, you say your side box go to the concession stand, don't walk up to the other part of the park.
Yeah, right, yeah, I.
Right, so I think if we were to say close it, or reduce the hours to accommodate the other ones, I think there'd be a lot of people irritated with us for doing that, because now they gotta send their kid with five bucks all the way up on the hill to get food.
And I'm guessing they would then set up their own concessions under that overhang, like they do for other tournaments? That would be your next question, is would you let them set up? And then we're back in with, you know, the bigger issue of even no, you know, income for the city.
And part of, yeah, and then I think about some of the money then that the city makes off that concession stand, helps us to keep fees down for other things, you know, so we have to look at that whole picture.
Have you placed your orders for this year already?
Not for food, that's on Wednesday. I have for my soda and my Powerade and my water, but all my food, I order on Wednesday, it comes in Thursday.
Jen, do you know how many vendors are coming out there?
How many?
Yeah.
I don't think you've got that list, it was, um.
You didn't give me a list, you told me five at the school.
Okay.
I was just kinda curious.
And I have already VFW, Kona Ice, the Stormy grilled cheese.
Cow.
What is it?
Cow.
Cow?
The grilled, or cheese curds.
Okay.
Ooh.
And then the Mexican, Mexican food truck, so you do have five?
Five.
I see that, they see cheese curds, man, I feel on it for that cheese curd, I wouldn't be, yeah, and that's not something I would ever expect Ann to sell at the, you know, and even if she did, guess what, I'd be going to the cheese curd truck, you know?
Get Wisconsin cheese to come back first time since I've done that.
I know that the.
You said Subway sandwiches, too?
Oh, yeah, Subway.
Subway?
Subway.
Okay, so six.
And whatever, Pizza Hut used to always have.
That's what I was thinking, like, I.
That's always, yeah, that was a huge.
People wanted them, go to the park.
Yes, because of that.
And get pizza, pizza, and beer, and listen to music, and.
Can't help, yeah.
Not that VFW stand, it's just packed.
Yeah, luckily, good for them, they ran out of food last year.
Yeah, I mean, it just, all, all lines are just packed about 30 feet back, you know, for one hour.
So, that's, that brings up a question, and, and this is more of a rhetorical question, but how would the VFW feel if we asked them to close their concession stand because of the vendors? I'll bet they wouldn't be very happy. So it's just something to think about, right? So we have to kind of think of that, too.
I guess I would look at it that way, just because they're a vendor that we seek out because of the burgers and because of what they offer, I don't know.
You know, so what makes them different than what the concession stand at the Ball Diamonds thing?
Just because we want to be able to bring in vendors that you're not gonna be able to get on a regular weeknight at ballgames, we go up with a slushie there on Tuesday night, where you can't get Kona Ice there on Tuesday night, so we want to keep some of them coming back.
I don't know, I just, I guess, you know, I really want Tobacco Days or Heritage Days or whatever continue to grow and thrive, I just don't see how the city can afford to not have the concession stand open that weekend, because we make money on it, too, and it's just such a ripple effect for other things, that we're gonna have to make that money up elsewhere, charging the league fees, or who knows what, we just have to make up that money elsewhere, so I'm not a big, I'm not for closing that concession stand down.
Ann, you don't have any suggestions on any items that you could, back to Debbie's suggestion of possibly?
I mean, the burgers and the brats, I could not, I mean, I could not sell those, but we oughta make sure that the hot dogs, that somebody's selling them, because, I mean, that's a good kid item.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, I could see maybe keep the hot dogs, but not the burgers and the brats, I can't imagine you'd make that much off of those anyways if they're pre-cooked. What do you do with them afterwards if they don't sell?
What's the big issue?
They usually sell.
Oh, they do, okay.
So it is a pretty good item for you.
It is a good item, but it's gonna benefit the VFW as well, you know?
Could we do something with the walking tacos? Just because the other place had tacos, nachos.
Right.
That's, it'd be good to know if we had a list of what your best sellers were.
Right.
So if you could do that for next year, too, that we could.
Right, we could do that. But then I could limit, you know, the things that are doubled down, the top items.
So that would be burgers, brats, nachos, what else?
Burgers, brats, nachos, and probably walking taco.
So are we gonna then get to the point where you're only making $200 that weekend?
I don't know.
And so then we're back at the, I mean, we just kicked ourselves in the foot, so to speak, Jim. The bad foot.
Thanks.
I mean, we could try it and see how it affects things.
But are we gonna kind of ruin your reputation with your customers at the Ball Diamonds by messing around with your food menu? You know, if you take food away to try to cater to the other ones.
Right.
Are you gonna have a bunch of irritated people then, because, well, why ain't you selling hamburgers this year, whatever?
You can blame it on us today. Everybody's bought us, why does not have it?
Yeah, they're getting a bad enough rep.
What's that?
So Tobacco Days is trying to draw people in, you know.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
I know, but I'm just saying.
Tobacco Days brought in the VFW vendor.
We're trying to get people back, we don't need to start changing things.
Get your specialty vendors in, I like the cheese curds, the candy cane, the elephant ears, the, what did you call those, donuts?
The elephant ear guy hasn't been there for three years, what happened to him?
Deep fried funnel cakes, the, you know.
I heard he retired, but his kid was gonna come back, he never did. Okay, side topic, sidebar, but the elephant ear guy, Minnesota, Makedo, I think he was out. Anyway.
So, the walking tacos, Ann, if you eliminated nachos as well, you could bring those back on Sunday because the Mexican food truck won't be there.
Yeah, we could do that.
Oh, there you go.
And then I could just say, I could point them to the VFW that they have, the burgers and the brats up there. Are they gonna have?
Special this weekend.
Yeah, the brats.
Okay.
We're not eliminating brats and burgers, are we?
They said no, but I thought there was. VFW doesn't say no, but for food persons.
Okay.
All food persons.
Yeah, okay.
And is the VFW out there the entire weekend too, or are they out there more limited?
They're out.
Who would it hurt to leave the brats back on your menu? VFW, the only other ones that are selling them?
Yeah.
They're known for their burgers.
Well, burgers and brats.
They have those fried, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah.
See, that's why I'm kind of hung up on this, because the concession stand sells apparently quite well and then so does the VFW, they do quite well, so obviously if you sell, you're selling the same items you're both selling, so I don't, something just, I don't know, I don't get it.
And if they sold out last year.
A lot of them aren't gonna walk over there.
But then, when you've got the other food trucks.
They sold out last year, but we, besides the carnival, we didn't have any more vendors.
Fewer than this year?
Fewer last year, yes.
Yeah, but the VFW keeps coming back, I think they do okay.
Yes.
They do okay.
That's what you were saying, they sold out.
Yeah.
Ann and the VFW do good, so I mean.
Good, so why, yeah.
To try to alter what we're doing to cater to some food trucks that ain't from here, I don't.
Now, the VFW said to you, we're not coming back because Ann has her concession stands. I mean, that'd be the discussion, but that's not what we're hearing. I think I hear you say some of your other, your vendors aren't, you know, you're having a hard time getting. So, if Ann's and the VFW aren't selling the other thing, you know, if you don't have a vendor that's selling the hot dogs and the brats and the, or the hamburgers, then that's not the, that's not an issue.
Do you, do you, do you ever put like the food trucks down by the Ball Diamonds?
We've talked about it more so for this year too.
Power an issue?
Could be.
Kona Ice, I think, is powered on our own. And then we talked about Subway, little wagon, trailer, and then all that's powered.
What was the one we added?
That's the Mexican one, that's, that'll be down there.
That would be the only one.
Well, as a patron, I like to see a variety of things, so I hope that you can keep these vendors and, I mean, we can go down to a game and get, no offense, but we can get the same stuff from the concession stand every weekend, but it's kind of a special weekend with Tobacco Days this weekend.
How's the attendance been in the last four or five years?
Last year was really good. That was the best year for quite a while.
Yeah, it was a good year. Good deal with that Sunday afternoon jam too, it was good. Me and a bunch of guys went and played music on stage and it brought a lot of people.
Well, if anyone has any thoughts of changing the hours or anything on the concession stand, could they put it in a motion and proceed from there? Otherwise, right now, it stands that it's open whatever hours they're scheduled for. So, it sounds like we want to leave it the way it is, maybe see what the percentage of the sales are of each item for, for next year and proceed from there and talk to your vendors and find out if you're getting anything from them to start with. Otherwise, that, that would make a little difference too, because if you're not getting anything out of it, why are we even?
I don't, I don't think.
Yeah, so why are we? Why are we gonna possibly have sales loss and people upset with our concession stand because they don't have something there that they gotta go across the park to get? So, maybe a little more data for next year from, from both the concession stand and from your vendors and potential vendors and see what that does.
Well, I think with, you know, all of us council members usually, you know, I see everyone out there, you know, all six of us, I don't know if the rollout comes down or not, but, you know, did everybody monitor the heck out of it, you know, and, you know, just kind of come back, you know, to the council or for next year's and stuff.
Okay, I'm gonna be watching everything you eat. Which, which, when you go, believe me, I like to hit them all.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying in general, you know, bumping each other and stuff, saying, you know, what are you seeing, you know, and you got, cluck some ideas out amongst each other and stuff, you know, and just kind of, you know, it's actually, it was a good meeting to talk about this and to, to see what's, you know, what's up, you know, Ann and all the vendors and stuff and, you know, just kind of, instead of just out there just whatever, just kind of monitor things a little more, I think it's kind of a nice light idea just to put it, what everybody mentioned, put, put the pieces together a little bit more better or whatever, or leave the same, you know. I'll try to do my best and stuff, write down some ideas and stuff and bring it back to the staff or council or whatever the case.
Just everybody go out there hungry and hit them all. So, it sounds like it's, nothing's changing, so let us know. Thanks for.
Are you good with doing, are you still gonna sell those items or not sell those items?
I, it was decided that we will sell the items.
Oh, okay.
But keep it, let's keep a track and see.
Right, I'll keep track.
Track and see how it goes.
See if there's anything that's maybe not selling so good that we could knock off and not to compete with somebody then for next year.
Yeah, well, for the most part it does.
However, I think Debbie, you had a good idea about the tackle, the walking tackles.
Well, I think she just said she was gonna sell them and I was hoping, I was hoping that you'd come to an agreement where you would give up a couple of items, actually was my hopes.
But is that my decision or is that a council decision?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
No, there's been no decision made, so.
There was, right, so.
Right.
I mean, that's what I was personally hoping, and I was hoping that maybe between the two of, the two of you, maybe you could work something out, but that's between you two.
Actually, it's the council has to decide.
Yeah, it's a council.
If they're gonna make a motion, that would be a prerogative.
Oh, okay, well, then I'd like to make a motion that for the weekend, that you possibly give up the selling of the burgers and brats.
Is there a second? Is there a second? One more time, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second, I thought you were gonna go with the tacos and nachos.
I better just try what I could, that didn't work either.
For only a couple days.
Well, just keep track of stuff that'd be, that'll help us next year, Ann.
Okay.
And find out if you're getting anything from them because we wanted to benefit Tobacco Days too, so they can continue, but we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot for not.
I think we got rid, I'm pretty sure we got rid of the fees just figuring.
Convenience.
Matters here to get people in, same reason we got rid of the other part.
Right, here's the goal, a lot to stop people from paying the admission.
For the parade, I mean, when I started, it was charge everybody a fee to be in the parade. And I was like, no, they're all entertainment, so you want anybody that we can get, we got rid of that fee too. I'm not sure we don't.
All right, well, thank you for coming down.
Just an observation, at State Fair, they keep coming out with deep fried everything.
Yeah.
And there's a big hoopla about it and all the press before the event, and then when State Fair comes, you see this big magnet for people at one locale or another. And the way I see this Heritage Days is the city carries no more force than any other vendor there and it's, it feels even steven to me, and I'm a newcomer, you know. It doesn't seem like the city has any edge over anyone else or no other vendor has any edge over any other vendor, so for one to step back as an easement, I think they would all have to step back in order to be fair and work out the menu offerings collegially, you know, but that isn't gonna happen, so I think if they were just published where the locations are, it'd be more in line like what State Fair is doing.
Thank you.
Good luck and thank you for all your work on the festival.
Thanks, John.
See you this weekend. Committee reports, finance, Mark.
Make a motion to approve a pay request number two from Concrete Service Company for the 2018 sidewalk replacement program in the amount of $17,832.74.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa? Yes. Davis? Yes. Olson? Yes. Burdick? Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve a pay request number two from Nelson Escavating and Sun LLC for the veterans' building parking lot project in the amount of $33,264.95.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I drove up there, it looks pretty nice, to me it does.
Edge the edge.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Wellmets? Yes. Davis? Yes. Olson? Yes. Burdick? Yes. McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa? Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve pay request, request number one from G. Fox and Sun Incorporated for the Broadway and Chelsa Street Improvement Project in the amount of $66,47.80.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets? Yes. Davis? Yes. Burdick? Yes. McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa? Yes. Olson? Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $339,912.2.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets? Yes. Davis? Yes. McIntyre? Yes. Issa? Yes. Olson? Yes. Burdick? Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve a sandwich board permit for Ripple's resale.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets? Yes. McIntyre? Yes. Issa? Yes. Davis? Yes. Olson? Yes. Burdick? Yes.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve private property on public sidewalk permit for Ripple's resale.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellmets? Yes. Burdick? Yes. McIntyre? Yes. Issa? Yes. Davis? Yes. Olson? Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, I have.
Thank you, anything from utilities?
Yeah, we met last Monday for about three minutes and just approved the bills, that was it.
Okay, historic.
We tried to have a meeting tonight, but we didn't have a forum.
That's one of my, one of my reports down here later, that we have an opening there. And that's what we're at, mayor, all the personnel staff reports, have an opening on historic commission. The vets, Veterans Memorial kickoff went rather well, I'd like to thank Dan Reinhardt for flying by and waving at us. It was a nice warm day to be hanging out down there and getting that going. Good luck with, for those guys. And probably no Tobacco Days is this weekend along with Clay Days, so hang out at the park and get something to eat. And chief, did we ever find out what the dollar amount is on the vest if I owe any more money? What's your grant?
Well, that's been turned in, I don't have the total with me right now.
Okay.
We got the grant money?
The grant money should be through.
You haven't got the grant money yet?
Judging on what the usual grant money will probably be, I'm gonna say yes, money will still be owed. I'll get my paperwork tomorrow.
Okay.
Money will still be owed, is that what you said?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, try harder. Thanks. Anybody else?
I do, I do. I have three things, huh? A lot of people ask me what's happened up at the cat plant, I know they knocked down a bunch of trees. Has staff heard anything up there, Mona, what's happened up there?
Well, those are all ash trees, they're dead.
Yeah, okay.
So, I don't have a lot of news, they may be seeking, I don't know if they, Tom, if they, they were gonna take down the one corner of the building that's the only under 30-foot, have they sought a race permit yet?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll, they'll.
So, that, that's the only thing I'm aware of, other than the companies that are in there are using the space.
Yeah, okay. And then the, what's the status of the soccer field, is that coming in this summer or fall? Okay, just curious.
So, that, that'll, that'll be a report through Parks Committee once, right, that once it, once it's a done deal, once we have everything ironed out with not only soccer, but Little League and FFA and the Conservation Club. So, still kind of in the works with that.
And the, I talked to Chris a couple weeks ago about any more movement with the covenants for the business park?
We were discussing that earlier tonight, and we'll get in touch with you later on here.
Okay, good, and maybe talk you out to the council, see what's going on and stuff like that. So, yeah, thanks.
I have one quick question, Tom, are we hearing any complaints at all from residents on South Main for no parking?
No.
Good, because I am hoping, you know, and I don't know what we need to do about it, but it'd be nice if we could keep that no parking after the construction thing is over, but, so I'd like to kind of continue to have an update, see if we have any complaints from that.
There was a complaint after they got a parking ticket.
Oh, gee.
Our staff isn't.
And then more gets taken away after everything else is done.
Have the speeds been?
You'll have more, excuse me, you'll have more what?
More complaining about no parking, keep taking more complaints away. More complaints after the construction is done versus what there is now too.
Well, are, are you hearing a lot of complaints and you're saying?
I have, I have one.
You had one?
Questions as to why, about they got one complaint after you got a parking ticket and a lot of questions as to why.
We've had, the comments I've heard from our staff, and it's not an official survey, so don't take it that way, but have been, people are happy that the parking's gone.
Right, that's why I'm saying, you, they, they had one because they got a ticket, of course they're gonna complain because they got a ticket, but if it's no parking sign and they parked, they deserve to get a ticket. Right, so, but.
I understand that, I'm just letting you know, yes, that was a complaint.
Okay.
I get a lot of questions as to why it's no parking.
Okay.
Explain to them why it's no parking, I don't know if there's gonna be complaints after all the construction, after the reason for the no parking is gone.
I.
I'm just planning ahead that they're possibly complaining it's taken away.
I would, if people do ask, I'm not, I'm trying to figure out the best way to say this. We don't want to just say it's just for the construction, it is for now, but.
Don't we get too far?
It could continue that way, I guess. I don't want people to start thinking that, oh, once that construction's done, boom, it's gonna be back to normal, so.
Bill, can I ask a question on this topic? What, what's the status of that, are we still planning for another grant then for 19, or is that all over?
It's all tied up with the DOT.
Okay.
All their programs are on hold because of Foxconn, so we're all waiting for answers. Well, that's what it is, they're, you know, they're trying to find the financing and show the teams around so they can make it more flexible, so that's what they keep telling us, is we're, it's all tied up.
I've just got one quick question, totally unrelated while I got everybody here, and a lot of questions to me on the 4th of July, has any, have they ever given any consideration to some type of permanent stage out at the racetrack?
It's been discussed for years.
Because I got a lot of questions, I helped put the stage together for that one and then, of course, everybody was asking me since I'm on the council, I'm like, I don't know, thought I'd throw it at you, they have discussed it, okay. And you guys always apparently shut it down every year.
No, no, that's, I would say a financing as well as a debate as to whether or not that makes, not everybody wants a stage in the same place and the lighting that comes with the trucks, there's a whole bunch of reasons why it's never really gotten anywhere, but it's certainly out there for a conversation.
Back to Main Street, has the 25 mile per hour patrol turned up any?
Speeding on South Main and Hayne?
Yeah.
There's been traffic stops, but it's not, I don't know, it's not crazy, it's not like everybody's coming through. President slows them down and a few traffic stops since the last meeting.
Are you asking if the lack of parking has changed the speeding, is that what you're asking?
Well, there was some parallel concern about speeds being held at 25.
Right, yeah, okay, I thought maybe it was related to the parking, that's what I was wondering what your question was.
Anyone else? Let's get out of here.